Six thirty, you'll call the meeting to order. And it's a pleasure to welcome Mr. Lawrie from the Recorder and Times and Ron Virchell from the South Grenville Deacon. It's the first time in many, many, many months that we've been able to have some semblance of a public meeting and to have the press present. And hopefully, things will be drawn in. So this is the June the fourteenth, meeting of the Committee of the Whole Administration and Finance for the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal. And the time is six thirty. And the meeting is a combination of a virtual meeting and a council meeting with all members of council and beings at their desks. And I think a number of folks, and I see that Treasurer is joining us virtually, join us. The public has the link to the meeting. I think, or we published the meeting after we recorded, do not?
So through the chair, we give the public the opportunity to request a virtual link to attend the meeting. We don't have it listed on our website due to security. So they're likely in advance of the meeting to request a Zoom link as well as we recorded and upload it YouTube later.
That's the way we're working it. Okay, thank you very much. So with those few introductory remarks, Chair's looking for a motion to approve the agenda for the committee meetings. Move by Councilor Cameron, second by Councilor Delvaux. Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. All right, I'm moving now to item three on the agenda, which is disclosure, excuse me, yes, disclosure of community interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures this evening? Thank you. And item number four, business arising from the previous committee meetings. Now, meetings, the minutes were circulated with the agenda package. Is there any business arising from that meeting on? What was the date? I guess that date of that meeting was made. Okay. You have a question? Go ahead.
I was just wondering on the presentation from Mr. and Mrs. DeWinter, is there been any info update on that?
Through the chair, there hasn't been any substantial progress made from the time of the presentation, but we will be looping back with them.
Okay, thank you. And I have another one, Mr. Mayor, and it's on page four of the minutes. And it, under Council inquiries and notices of motion, Mr. Concerns raised by Mr. Billy, has there been any update on that situation?
Through the chair, from the township's perspective, no, there's no follow-up.
Okay, and the last one I have is the next two or three bullet points down, number nine, I guess, third bullet point regarding the Health Unit organizing a vaccination center clinic, I should say, in Cardinal. Any word on that?
Okay, so I'll just speak to that because when I reported that as part of my report, I was indicating that the Health Unit had declined the invitations from Greenfield, no, from Giant Tiger and from the Greenie Center to organize a clinic. But then subsequent to that meeting, Counselor Hunter had indicated that he was interested in working with the Health Unit to organize a clinic. And I made the offer to the Health Unit following the meeting this past Friday, and I think Mr. Counselor Hunter was contacted today.
Yeah, he's contacted the Health Unit, and tech people were meeting with Mike Spencer at two thirty to take the Greenie Center to certify the Wi-Fi hookup was good. I haven't heard back from Mike as yet, but he fairly believes they're...
Any dates for that, Counselor Hunter?
No dates yet, just that they're there. They told us before that they were booked up with the clinics for two weeks, that was a week ago anyway, Mr. Mayor, that they told us. They wouldn't be ending next week, so it'd be out. So I think it's likely they'll turn around the first week of July or so, likely if we get one, but it appears they're sending their tech people to look, so I think we're likely on the list. So it's a matter of goodness that dates, and I go ahead with the logic, and the other volunteers are getting lined up. Mike volunteered with the rec staff, they're going to set the building up once they approve it, so we can do it in pretty short order if we get the word.
I think, I think the, now that they're doing the age twelve, and I'm just telling us, is pushing that group, and not all of that group has transportation, so that's why they're interested in doing these clinics, more of these clinics in smaller towns.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so if there's no further questions or business arising from the previous meeting, I'm going to move on. Item number five on the agenda is delegations and presentations we have done this evening. And item number six is discussion items we have done this evening. But item number seven is action and information items. We have a number in front of us. The first is the community grants and request from Centennial sixty-seven School concerning funding reallocation. And that briefing note comes with a recommendation, so Chair's open for discussion or a mover and a second or to action the recommendation. Mr. Bradley?
Second.
Are you moving, Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bradley is moving that we accept the recommendation. Counselor Cameron, seconding. Is there any discussion on the recommendation? Hearing none, about to call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, and this is just a simple little change of usage for the grant money. And item number seven B concerns the RBC financing for the greater. And again, there is a recommendation in front of us. Chair's open for discussion and/or a mover and a second. Counselor Hunter, moving.
I'll second.
And Deputy Mayor Deschamp, seconding. Further, is there any discussion on this item, the financing item? No further discussion, I'm going to call the question on the recommendation, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. And again, this has been talked about at several committees. So moving on to item number seven C, which is the annual IT alignment report. And the IT alignment report comes to us, as I understand it, once a year. And council will notice that it's a rather brief report because the majority of our IT security requirements are, of course, confidential, and we don't want to be signaling to the broad, you know, those steps that we're taking to keep our, to keep our systems secure. So you do have in front of you a slight background report just indicating to you what steps have been taken in what areas. Is there any discussion on this report? I see that there's no recommendation with it. There any discussion? Hearing none, well, I think I'll entertain a motion to receive this report for information purposes. Do I have a mover to receive the report for information purposes?
Aye.
I have Mr. Bradley moving, does he have a second, Mr. Robertson? And those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, so it will be part of the record that we did receive the report. Thank you very much. So I'm moving on now to item number seven D, which is the OPP detachment framework issue, which has been discussed at several previous committee meetings. Now coming to a head, thanks largely to the leadership shown by Mayor Packard in North Grenville, who was able to convene a meeting of all of the mayors in Grenville County quite early on in this process. And I think everybody's aware of the main issue, the Solicitor General had asked for a single board for the Grenville detachment. The mayors had asked for three boards, and so here we have the justification for submitting a three-board proposal to the Solicitor General. And the briefing note comes with a recommendation, the chair's open for discussion. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Counselor Cameron?
Yes, I'd just like you to bring your attention on page forty of this, of this report. It's where they're doing the service demands for each of the different areas. And under Prescott, on page forty, it says where it's located. And it also says it's located five kilometers from the International Border Crossing and will have policing-related concerns specific to that crossing that are not otherwise addressed by the county. And the border citizen. That also impacts our township as well, Mr. Mayor. And I'm just, I'm a little confused by that statement as to whether it's going to have more favorable situations for Prescott because of that statement. It should also include Edwardsburg Cardinal as well, seeing it is in our township.
And, and I have to admit that I don't know the... We're good to go?
Thank you. So, yes, it certainly will be recognized that the International Border is within the township and will certainly have some, some impact.
Thank you so much, Mr. CAO. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yes, I just, keepers, I mean, the Solicitor General asked for one, now we're getting three, right?
No, we're asking for three.
They're asking for three. And the Solicitor General asked for one. And when you look at the map, I don't know, I have a hard time, I have a hard time looking at that map and saying Prescott needs one on their own, I really do. I mean, I'll go along with, with this, but I don't think, I don't know how far it's going to go when it gets up to the, to the big boards because three different.
Well, I'm looking at it actually from another point of view as well, and that is when you look at the population numbers.
Oh, yes, that's right.
I mean, North Grenville has sixteen thousand.
Three times as many.
Our board will have seventeen thousand population, and Prescott will have four thousand population. So I don't want to comment one way or the other because having attended those meetings, and they were, I was quite adamant that they deserved to have their own board because of their history, the historical background, their police board goes back quite a number of years. And so I think basically what, and by the way, North Grenville is equally as adamant that they have their own board, da-da-da-da-dah.
I remember the first meeting.
So I think the decision of the mayors basically was, well, all right, we will, we'll ask for three boards and leave the final decision to the Solicitor General.
So we can.
So that's what you have in front of us here tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, the CAO, you wanted in first?
If I could, Mr. Chair, yeah, certainly, certainly one vote is to be submitted, but if you look at the OPP detachment board proposal process, section sixty-seven requires that the Ontario Provincial Police Detachment Board or more than one OPP detachment board. So it does give some flexibility with respect to that.
That's right, because we have two different, we have one in Prescott, one in North Grenville. That's right, I understand that, but I can go along with the two, but the three is kind of...
Correct, with you all. Okay, Mr. Bradley and then Deputy Mayor?
I didn't attend any of the meetings, Mr. Mayor, but I'm just wondering, the policing services has a fairly significant impact on our budgets, and was there any assessment made during this examination of potential impact on budgets in the three districts?
Okay, and I can respond to that. And the answer is, those jurisdictions which have a board are responsible for the costs of that board. And, and those boards come with a significant finance budget, budget, finance cost. So Prescott has a board, and they do, and they do, they are subject to that cost. We don't have a board because we're a section ten or something, and we just have a contract with the OPP. Now, the whole emphasis behind the new Police Services Act is that it's, it's constructed in such a way that all municipalities that get policing services from the OPP will have, quote, "access to a board," or, quote, "a membership component on a board, on a board." So that was what was behind it, and there was never any talk of budgets or supporting the costs of board operations. So that whole question of financing has never been part of the, that's just a quick answer. Deputy Mayor?
Right, that was through the mayor. That was part of my question was costs associated, do we, do we know? I mean, we're talking of, the way I read it, a minimum of five people per board, provincial appointees making up twenty percent, and members of the public making up twenty percent. And I'm assuming that means that one member from Augusta, one member from Edwardsburg Cardinal, and a minimum of one from Merrickville. And nice to know what the costs, I mean, we don't have those, we don't bear those now. A considerable amount for contract, it'd be nice to know of, of boards are, I mean, three boards means minimum of fifteen, fifteen people for a relatively small population. We're talking about thirty-seven thousand people total.
I can't argue, what you're saying is, is correct. Counselor Hunter?
Well, I have no problem going on this, what they want to submit here, I, I can't really see that Solicitor General was going, this whole proposal, like, board for four thousand people, like, you got one detachment in Kingston would have twice as many people as what this whole board, again, would have. See North Grenville, the territory that they cover and the size and being close to Ottawa and influx of people, that maybe they might have a justification for it because they're growing, one might, or something tells me they're the fastest-growing region in the territory or something like that. So I can see them maybe fighting to get this, but as far as the rest of us go for that area there, for me, I'd never fight for a board anyway, off and on over the years for years, Edwardsburg was offered the chance to have a board, and as you say, the financial cost, we turned it down every time because, hey, we can call the commander, and we've always had a pretty good relation, less than they're getting stuff done and talking to them. And they're always, they've had a lot of them over years, we had a lot of mayors, I haven't heard any mayors say that they weren't open to picking up the phone and talking to them, and they did. Didn't always get the answers we wanted, but they always talked to us, and the board's going to be the same. We're going to talk to them, but detachment commanders are going to have the final say what they're going to do anyway, so.
Yep.
Their budget that they're spending, so. I don't know, I'm fine with going along with the record, but I don't think it's going anywhere, so.
But if it does, sorry, was injecting, but if it does, then we have problems, I think.
What?
Well, look, because of the financing aspect, we haven't even looked at it.
No, but at least we get to share finance with two other municipalities.
That's true.
For one seat out of five members.
For one seat.
Well, now, that's the other question that comes out here, I'm going to ask the CAO to speak to this. So on page thirty-seven of the report, right at the bottom of the page, it talks about the composition of the various boards, and it talks, the composition of the board in Prescott would be five members, the mayor, a council representative, a community representative, and two provincial representatives. North Grenville would be seven members, the mayor, a council representative, three community representatives, and two provincial representatives. Now, it says the composition of the board serving Augusta, Edwardsburg Cardinal, and Merrickville would be seven members, but it doesn't say how those members would be structured. Is there reason that was left out?
Well, just for, again, Mr. Chair, just to provide a little bit of flexibility, what we would anticipate would be a, a council representative for each of the municipalities.
Three.
And then a, a member from the public.
Three march.
So that's six, and then one provincial appointee.
Right.
It's sort of the, it's sort of the structure of the setup.
So any further discussion on this report?
Hey, Mr. Chair, just, just to speak to the, to the financing costs, if you look on page forty-one and forty-two, it sort of gives you an indication of the operating costs of the current Police Services Board. So for instance, with North Grenville, the operating costs associated with that Police Services Board is about twenty thousand, including honorariums, conferences, professional memberships, et cetera. For Prescott, it's around, around nine thousand. Merrickville is around the nine thousand dollar mark, so, or the nine thousand dollar mark. So we're, we're probably looking someplace between the ten to twenty thousand, probably somehow divided reasonably equally between the three municipalities.
Right. And of course, the other two, Augusta has a board now, and so does Merrickville, so those members that sit on that board, on those two boards now, have had what I would call the basic training required of a, of a police board member. We would, of course, I think, have to incur our, our, our costs for our members because we don't have anybody that has had any experience on a Police Services Board. So we might have some initial training costs, but I, I thank you very much for pointing out those costs, and sort of gives us an order of magnitude here. Is there any further discussion on this? If there's no further discussion, the chair's looking for a mover and a second or to action the recommendation on page thirty-one, which will send, which will endorse this proposal, and assuming that is endorsed by all of the other six municipalities, six, five municipalities, it will be submitted to the Solicitor General on, prior to the June twenty-eighth deadline. So Chair's looking for a mover and a second.
Before we go any further, do we, at that point, depending upon what the SolGen sends back, do we have option to, to, to back away at that point if we don't like what the compositions of the board and the costs will be, or, or as, once we put this forward, we're in, no matter what the cost and the composition are, then we just live with it?
Good question, and I can't answer it because I don't know what the process would be if the Solicitor General turns it down. I have no idea what the process would be.
What are the implications if we turn it down? We don't support them.
Well, if we turn it down, there'll be a major problem, meaning the Solicitor General's June twenty-eighth deadline. And by the way, the June twenty-eighth deadline was an extension of a previous deadline, which I think was June the first.
June, June the seventh, Mr. Chair.
June the seventh. So, you know, I mean, I've discussed this enough times that I'm hoping that we will approve this tonight because I think I've explained the reason why we're kind of, quote, "going along with it," in the interest of neighborliness, I guess you could say. And, I mean, we're basically kicking the can over to the Solicitor General and saying, here's what we want, you decide. So, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that we'll pass this because I think we're better to go to the Solicitor General with a proposal rather than not to submit a proposal at all. So I have Deputy Mayor Deschamp moving, the recommendation is, does he have a second?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron, seconding, and I saw that Counselor Hunter had his name off as well, but take Counselor Cameron. Any further questions, those in favor? Pose the venue, give you a chance, Mr. Bradley.
Well, I'm opposed to this, another level of bureaucracy, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I'll show it, carried, but one, one, one in opposition. Okay, so now, I'm at...
This term is getting rid of it.
Yeah. What am I here? I'm now at E, which is discussion or consideration of an interim control bylaw for the industrial park expansion lands. And this issue arrives on our agenda because of the situation that we had at the last meeting where, you know, we had already indicated our industrial park expansion lands and signaled those lands in, I think it's the county official plan, also in our draft zoning bylaw, this is coming forward, am I right? And so now, at our last meeting, we had two representatives asking us to take two of those lots in the industrial park expansion lands and convert them to residential, which, of course, would be at cross purposes with the whole initiative. So you have a report from Novatec in front of you, along with a recommendation, and I think the report is open to discussion. Deputy Mayor?
I think, you know, certainly we, they don't take an interim control bylaw lightly, I mean, it's, it's a bit of a sledgehammer, but, I mean, thinking back to all the discussions we had through CDC developing the new official plan, knowing that we changed this area to future industrial through that, that official plan, I think you've identified an area that, that when we were doing that discussion at CDC, we, we kind of missed, I think we missed the mark in that, which of the whole bylaw with the official plan at that time. And I see this as, I guess, a way of rectifying something that we should have done a while back, and, and we're, you know, we're a year and a half or two years down the road, maybe correcting something that I, as Chair of CDC, should have caught at the time. So I'll, you know, I'll definitely, I do think it's a bit of a sledgehammer, but it's something that we missed and we should have, should have done back then, so. Also.
Well, I think you're being too hard on yourself. Well, because, I mean, certainly by identifying it in the county official plan, we signaled harm wide to the public what our intentions were.
Fair enough.
Any further discussion on this briefing note? Here, the chair's looking for a mover and a second or to action the recommendation. I have Deputy Mayor Deschamp moving, does he have a second or at least? Counselor Delvaux, seconding. Further discussion? Hearing none, about to call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. So now, as I understand it, and I'll just clarify this with the CAO, what this is basically telling us is that we should get a, a study initiated as quickly as possible, and that's the speech, we can put the interim control bylaw in place. So my question is, can the two things be done concurrently at the council meeting at the end of the month?
So through, through the chair, it can be done at the special council meeting this evening.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yes, so, so, so council is required to pass the resolution to undertake a, a planning policy study of that work, which, which will be on there, and then, and then the bylaw will actually institute the effect of basically June fourteen.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks very much. I read that today. Why it didn't stick with me, I don't know, but I see it is on that special council. I do want you to know that I read the package.
There's a lot of activity going on.
All right, so now I'm moving to item number seven F, which is the site plan control agreement for Prisbyan. And so, again, we have a briefing note in front of us, and a long sort of adjustment from the planner and from the Prisbyan consultants. So, chair is open for discussion on this item. This is an amendment to the Prisbyan site plan control agreement. I see no discussion.
I don't really have a lot, I'm just more worried about implications for water.
Okay, so if there's no discussion, the chair is looking for a mover to action, the recommendation, which is to make the recommendation. Go ahead.
How does the site plan control agreement affect other work that the mayor was moving on for property transfer here?
Good question. And so, just to review, we have, we've sort of put our request, the Prisbyan, kind of on hold to see how this project would unfold. And I must say that it's unfolding quite neatly, with quite a number of acreages left over along County Road Two. However, it's sort of been flagged to me that this is just the first of what might possibly be two projects, and that they are possibly going to withhold a final decision on our request pending further developments, if I can put it that way?
Have they slashed the trimmers down?
No, still alive.
In that case, I'm prepared to move the recommendation.
Okay, Counselor Hunter is moving the recommendation. Does he have a second? Yes. Deputy Mayor Deschamp is seconding, and this is a recommendation that the committee recommend that council adopt a bylaw to amend the existing site plan control agreement for one thirty-seven common stride as attached. About to call a question on the motion, those in favor? Motion is carried, so that recommendation will go to the special council meeting, which will follow this meeting. And so that deals with that, and now I'm at item number eight on the agenda. Item number eight on the agenda is council inquiries or notice of motion. Are there any inquiries or notices of motion to come before this meeting?
Mine isn't an inquiry or notice of motion, but I do want to make note of the fantastic work that is going on in the waterfront in Cardinal. The NAPS is doing a wonderful job, a very clean job, very efficient job, and they're moving along very well, and I think we complimented the staff on having the docks in, but it is following or echoing. Counselor Dilavos emailed earlier this week, staff has the area looking fantastic.
Ready? So, Counselor Cameron.
Yes, thank you. As I was saying, that on my daily walk through at that area, the route that I'm in contact with cannot wait for that trail to be opened and ready to go. It was dying. Including myself.
Oh, that's great. Any other comments, Counselor?
Well, I haven't got too many comments. I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm down there too, and I spoke to our clerk about getting a hold of Mike, and I just wondered through the mayor to our clerk, did we get a comment on our dead maple tree down there, if they're going to get it taken down?
Through the clerk, I did advise the manager of Parks Recreation Facilities. I have not heard the chances of it.
So, yeah, through the chair, that's in the works.
Okay. And my second comment is, I left over a proposition of what we're doing down there. And I think we've got a major thing in there that we shouldn't have been doing when we're doing this walkway, and I'd like for us to try to find in the money there, what we're down there working is the parking lot in front of the boat launch there. I'd like to really see that, raise it up and some extra. I don't think we can afford to pave it this year, but I'd really like to see it squared up there, the grass cut out and widened out a little bit there, and gravel put in there and that leveled up.
Better definition of the edge.
It's, yeah, defined and it's rough in there. You see boats coming, if they come in a little fast, they bounce, and you see them tow them over the small fishing boats laying them back up on the ramps there to tighten down, and so it's pretty rough in there. And one other complaint I had too is that at the end of our boat launch going in there, I've been told by trying to figure the fishermen, that our rocks, six-inch rock that we put in at the end there, gave me, and it might have been put in at the end, to settle down, and now the water's still low that they're back backing over the end of the cement, get the boat fully launched, and there's about a six-inch or more drop there now. I'd like to really see some, correct it, never know your brother or something, put in there a little before they drop. It's going to affect the end of the cement there if they keep dropping up and down there.
So, I'll just put the question to the CAO. Is the CAO aware of these complaints that Counselor Hunter is addressing right now? I know that I've heard the same comments. I don't know whether, can't remember whether I passed them on or not, but.
So, through the chair, certainly aware of the tree, and part of the, part of that pathway was to sort of better define that parking lot.
Swear it off.
Well, yes, probably not to the extent talking, but we can certainly, we can certainly look at, see what we can do within with, for the end of it. I was not aware of the drop off at the end of the boat launch, but we'll certainly look into that.
It's quite noticeable, there is at least a six-inch, the trailers, you can see the drop. But we really didn't want to go that far. Are there any other inquiries or notices of motion? Hearing none, I'm going to move on. And so, item number nine is the mayor's report. So, I don't have a lot to report tonight. My immediate interest through this process has been to get the site plan agreement for Prisbyan in place, and I want to thank the staff for working on that, and also our consulting firm, Novatec. I know that Mr. Edwards will be here shortly. I've asked him to come at seven fifteen. I was hoping that he would come in time for the discussion at the committee level, but that's already passed us. And if the clerk is telling me we can't start the public meeting, the special meeting of the municipal council until eight, then it looks like we're going to have a few minutes here of blank time. But we will deal the bylaw for the site plan control agreement for Prisbyan in the special council meeting, and as soon as we've dealt with that item, I'm going to call a short adjournment just for a photo op with Mr. Edwards. I'm quite excited about what they're doing. Mr. Edwards has a press release that he'll bring with him that will further explain the extent of their involvement with this new regional distribution center. And I don't want to say more until he arrives. Other than that, I think the only other thing to report in public, and I've already reported it in my mayor's report that went out last night, was the fact that our natural gas extension and expansion project failed to find funding under phase two of the government's extension and expansion program for natural gas. Now, let me put it this way, the government had put two hundred and thirty million dollars into the program. Yes, two hundred and thirty-four million into the program. There were two hundred and ten submissions. Counselor, do you want to get that, just in case it's Mr. Edwards out the wrong door?
Sounds like it.
Sounds like it, yeah. Good evening, Mr. Edwards. Welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Edwards, just to bring you up to date with where we are, we're just finishing the committee meeting, and your site plan control agreement did receive the recommendation from the committee to proceed to council, and we're just going to wind up this committee meeting shortly, but unfortunately, we can't start our council meeting until the advertised time, which is eight o'clock, so be a few minutes of blank spots in here. So, anyway, I'm just going to finish up my report on the natural gas extension and expansion project. And so, there was two hundred and thirty million dollars allocated, one hundred and twenty-one municipalities submitted projects totaling two-point-six billion, and only forty-three of those projects were funded, and ours was not one of them. Now, the Ontario Energy Board has been slightly restructured by the Minister of Energy. There's a new chair in place, and there are some new members being appointed to the board, and the hope is that the board will change its way to projects. I've spoken to Enbridge a couple of times since we knew that we were not a funded project to see exactly what their thoughts were going to be, and was pleased to find out that they've, in anticipation that all of their submitted projects would not be funded, they had already created what they called a special review team, and the special review team is going to be looking at those projects which did not find funding. Now, they did receive funding for some twenty-seven of the projects that they had submitted, so they're going to be a busy company. All of those projects are scheduled to get underway before 2025. Many of them will be starting this year, quite a number starting in 2022 and 2023. In the meantime, this special review team is going to be looking at projects such as ours, which I am told was very close to being a standalone project, not requiring government funding. It can be reworked by some means. There is a possibility that we don't go back to the third round of funding, Enbridge would go directly to the Ontario Energy Board for leave to construct. Now, leave to construct is just a, an indication that the Ontario Energy Board has reviewed the proposal and has reviewed Enbridge's submissions for how the capital costs will be recovered. And the basic criteria is that existing customers of Enbridge are not expected to pay any of the capital costs of new projects. There's been some loosening of that criteria with this round in phase two, and it can be loosened additionally. And one of the things I want to point out to council is that one of the concepts that has been floated is the following. When these when these, when the pro forma financing for the recovery of these costs is submitted by Enbridge, they have to indicate to the energy board, we're going to provide gas pipeline to four hundred houses, four hundred new houses. Our estimate is that sixty-five percent, or fifty percent, or forty percent of those new houses will join the system and contribute this much to the capital cost. And the question which will now come up for debate on a very high level across the province is whether or not municipality admitting proposals in conjunction with Enbridge are prepared to pass mandatory hookup bylaws. Now, mandatory hookup bylaws are very simple in concept. The municipality passes a bylaw which says that if the gas line goes by your property, you either take or pay. You either join it, or you pay as if you had joined it, and we bill you for it. We already have those kinds of bylaws in place in Ontario for sewer and water projects that are funded with provincial money. We put them in place way back in the early eighties in Red Lake, and if the pipes, the sewer and water pipes went by your property, you joined, mandatory. And it was only the passage of that bylaw which enabled us to access the provincial grant money. That issue will now become an issue as it reflects on natural gas. So, just flagging that. And this is a public meeting, I want to flag it as heavily as I can for the public because it will become an issue in the public arena. So, that's basically the mayor's report. I'm going to proceed to question period to see if there is any questions in the question period, and we don't have a closed session. I'm going to proceed to question period to see if there is any questions in the question period, and we don't have a closed session. So floor is open for Chair questions from the gallery. Generally refer to the press first. Any member of the press with questions? Mr. Lawrie?
In your, in your submission to Enbridge, what was the area that you was, you wanted them to serve?
Okay, well, that project was called County Road Two Spencerville. And the project basically provided new pipeline from I'm going to get the name of the road on the east side.
Blair?
No, no, not Blair, further east than Blair.
Empire Hannah.
Empire Hannah Road. So it would provide new pipes from Empire Hannah Road all along County Road Two as far as Granville Park. Granville Park already, and west of Granville Park already has servicing. Then the second part of the project, and it was a two, was a two component project, was to take the pipe from the Enbridge substation on County Road 18, and it would go north along County Road 18 to the Weir Road. And then up the Weir Road as far as County Road 21, and then east on County Road 21 and service all of the village of Spencerville. That was the project.
Plus part of Augusta, right?
Pardon?
Plus, plus part of Augusta, right?
Yes, as it went north along Weir Road and County Road 18, it would take all of Augusta side roads. So it was a good project. I think it would have hooked up around, totally around 700 homes. And they're still interested in the project. As I say, it was very, very close to working on its own. And I don't know because I wasn't privy to it, although we worked very difficult, very hard with them to get the project defined, to have the project. They did the initial estimates, class D estimates for costs. But what I wasn't privy to is what percentage of the, of the homes that would see the pipe go by, what percentage of those homes were prepared to join? And we did a survey here in our township, and as a matter of fact, we did several, including door to door, where we had people sign letters of intent to join. And I think we submitted those as part of the Enbridge package. So it was a good submission. It was a complete submission, but just didn't cut the mustard when there's 210 applying for 2.6 billion and there's only 230 million up for funding. Any other questions? Yes?
Um, Caleb, we're talking about a, a trail, and I'm still playing catch up from the gap between newspapers and I haven't been here. Could you give me a little bit more information about where that trail is located?
Absolutely. It's on the waterfront area of Cardinal, going from the east part of Legion Way to the, what we refer to as Richardson's Point to the west. It goes past the Legion, it goes past the water treatment plant, and it goes past the pavilion canteen. So that area is classified as phase one and phase two. And phase two will have a ashbowl type hardtop. And phase one, which is to the east from the approximate Legion to the east, is going to be hardback type of gravel or stone dust. And so it's right along the waterfront at the, at the, what we refer to as Legion Way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? So hearing none, I'm about to, we have no closed session. I'm about to ask for the motion to adjourn the committee meeting. Do I have a mover to adjourn the committee meeting? Have Deputy Mayor Deschamps, does he have a second?
Yes.
And councillor Cameron, non debatable. Those in favor? Motion is carried. So if you'll do-